Good day to the like color to meet at Belbrook City Council. Today is Monday or Tuesday, November the 12th, 2019. You join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you can call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Here.
Dr. Van Beldheisen.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter.
Here.
The formal approval of the work session, regular meeting minutes of October the 28th, 2019.
So we do know there's one correction to the members present somehow left off Mr. McGill from the list, so that'll be corrected.
Okay, does everyone on council have any other corrections or additions to the minutes?
None.
That be the case, the minutes are approved as written with our correction to add Mr. McGill to an attendee at the council meeting. All right, thanks. Okay, mayor announcements and special guests. Before we get into our special guests and employee service recognition, I want to just make a couple of statements. First, as you know, we're not meeting on a Monday night. It's a Tuesday night tonight, which doesn't happen very often, but in observance of Veterans' Day, we went ahead and moved the meeting to Tuesday. I know we have many veterans in the community, as well as, I think, two or three on council. And I want to express a big thank you to the veterans on behalf of the city and their families for the service. I also appreciate the service department putting the flags downtown on the poles, and I know the optimists have put a lot of the flags in many of the front yards of residence. So, thanks for all that. And secondly, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family and friends of Dayton Police Detective George Del Rio. Members of Belbrook Police Department attended the viewing last night and also the funeral today. They participated in the motorcade as well. So, thank you Chief Doherty and the Belbrook Police Department for representing the city at this important event today. Next, we have employee service recognition. We have several employees are going to get service awards tonight. I guess we'll just read the names. We've got these arranged by length of service, starting with the newbies first. First up is Taylor Click, five years' service. Here, Taylor. And this year for the awards, it's all been purchased in Belbrook, so we did something a little bit different. So, thanks for service.
Thank you.
Deb Burdy, five years. Seems like it was just yesterday you hired her. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Interviewing him.
Yeah.
I can't wait for them five years.
I can't.
Jim Nedhart, five years' service. Another one seems like just yesterday. Congratulations. Josh Warren, five years' service. Congratulations, Josh. Okay, the bigger numbers, John Nickerson, ten years' service. Ronnie Harold, twenty years' service. We'll get it to him. Paul Stroud, twenty years' service. Jim Burns, twenty-five years' service. Thank you. There you go, Jim. Get the loot. Last but not least, Bob Loudermilk, thirty-five years' service. Thank you, congratulations. Appreciate it. Okay, that does that. We have one to pass out. Thanks, everyone, for the service. And next, we have the Belbo- Belbrook Lego League team. Adam Panstingle and crew. This is the group that I spoke to when I first became mayor back in June, and so they've done a lot since then. Come tell us about it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hi, everyone. My name is Heather Winarka. I've lived in Belbrook for three years. I've been coaching for four. And when I moved here, I realized Belbrook didn't have this program, so I started it three years ago at BCI. This is a local independent team, and I'm going to let you- let them tell you all about this program, but they are completely and wholly responsible for the creation of a robot that operates various challenges every year, as well as a research project that they present to judges. So, I will-
Just real quick, I'd like to add that we started this- late this summer, we started practicing two nights a week. We'll practice for about an hour, hour and a half, and we will- the kids have made a robot, they program it. I personally have no idea how they do it, but they do. They know how to do this. They- the theme this year was cityscapers. They had to find a local issue, so we had the opportunity to talk to the mayor, a couple of the police officers, and the Park District, and we just did a lot of research about our local area, found a issue that's in the area, and have worked, just done research on it. So, I will hand it over to the kids. They've done all the work.
Okay, pretty good.
Thank you.
So, first Lego League is basically a program where you develop a robot, you program it, and put it on to the game board, in which you have two minutes and 30 seconds to run every program that you can on your robot. There are themes every year. As Coach Adam said, this year's is skiddy- cityscapers, and every mission that we have to do with our robot is based on that theme. This year, there are 14 missions, and out of those 14, we get to choose which ones we participate in. We choose those by how far away from base they are and what the difficulty is in between which- how far away and which- what we have to do with our robot to make it work. We are also graded based upon our project, which is basically they- it's a giant research project that we have to do and put on a board and present to our judges, who judge us how our project is and how we present it. We're not only just based- we're not only just judged on those two things, we're also judged in sportsmanship and cooperation- competition, and teamwork. Competition is just how- we want our competition to also win. We don't want- we want them to do as good as us. That is basically the whole sum of Lego League itself. I'll hand it over to Tyler Fikes.
Hi. We are the 2019 Belbrook Builders. We all have been competing for more than one year, and we have some experience in what we are doing, but we also remember to have fun. Before the Legos came, we did fun team building exercises. We met the mayor and some police officers and the Park District Director, and we took a field trip around Belbrook. Our members are Alyssa, who just spoke, Tanner, right there, me, my name's Tyler Fikes, there's Tyler Panstingle and Tyler Gondak. So, you have three Tylers. And also, we also have two amazing coaches, Coach Adam and Coach Heather. I'm going to hand this off to one of the Tylers.
So, the history of our robot is we've, in the beginning of Lego League, we decided to use tank treads, but as we progressed through Lego League, we found out that the tank treads weren't working very well, and we decided to switch it to wheels. And some of the- some of the things on our robot is we have a gyro sensor and a color sensor to help us navigate.
Hello. So, last time we were here with the mayor, we got told about how Little Sugar Creek Road has been shifting. He told us his idea, and we came up with one of our own. So, first, we will take the movement, the water moving on the road, and move- and move it to the creek in a manner that will not affect the terrain at all. There are currently three drains about a quarter-mile stretch of the road, and what we're planning on doing is switching them to one giant grate that moves along the side of the road that would- that all the drains would lead, that all the wa- that the water would go into. These would lead to a 1,000-gallon retention tank underneath the road. It will clean the oil and other items that come from the cars and pu- and other things that can pollute the creek. The- we will add more outputs for the drain, too. In front of the outputs, there will be large boulders that will slow down the flow of water even on heavy rainfalls. And at the bottom, there would be a rain garden.
To build a rain garden, the ground will need to be prepared with sand, peat, and soil. These native plants will be deep- they will have deep- I'm sorry. They will have deep-rooted plants that will be grown in the rain garden. The examples that I would include would be milkweed and cornflower. Cornflower. And natural ra- they- sorry, the wa- the plants in a rain garden, they help clean the wa- they naturally clean the water eventually, and there are grants available through Clean Ohio to pay for this expense. It may be more expensive at the start, but after a long run, it may save money.
This may also- this is an addition, so also at the turns of the creek, there will be walls made out of rock, and they will be held together with a strong mesh.
All right, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. These kids have been working hard on the research project and the robots, and our competition is a week from Saturday at University of Dayton. This year, we're hoping to advance to- out of this district and go on to regionals, something that we've met as a goal at the beginning of the year. So, thank you.
We're going to hear more from them. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Impressive group. Next on the agenda, public hearing of ordinances. We have none. We do have an introduction of ordinance number 2019-20. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, mayor. Ordinance number 2019-20, an ordinance amending chapter 1060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code to increase rates charged for refuse collection. Whereas the city of Belbrook currently charges residents $14 per month for normal refuse collection, and whereas the city of Belbrook has completed a review of current and future expenditures related to the waste collection fund, and whereas the city of Belbrook Waste Collection Fund has been operating at a deficit and decreasing reserves, and whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to bring revenues in line with expenditures and must increase rates in order to do so, and whereas chapter 1060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code needs to be amended in order to increase rates by $1.50 per customer to $15.50 per month. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one. If the following amendment to chapter 1060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike-throughs and additions shown by italics and underline and effective January 1, 2020, there is established a monthly charge of $15.50 for normal refuse collection within the city. All utility bill payments shall be applied first to refuse charges, and any remaining amount shall be applied to water charges. Said refuse charge shall be paid by the occupant of each occupied single-family residence and by each occupant of a multifamily residence not covered by commercial contract pursuant to section 1060.04 sub A. Each operator of a business shall generate- generates a normal amount of refuse shall pay the normal collection charge unless other arrangements are made pursuant to section 1060.04A. Each operator of a business which generates refuse in excess of normal amount shall make arrangements for commercial collection in accordance with the previous provisions of these codified ordinances. Any resident or user of the refuse collection service who generates refuse in excess with a normal amount shall pay a surcharge equal to the actual cost of collecting such excess. For the purposes of this section, a normal amount of issues shall mean a weekly accumulation which is capable of being contained in 10 or fewer 30-gallon containers exclusive of yard waste such as grass, leaves, or brush. Section two, if this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. We've looked at this previously, and we're still fairly inexpensive on refuse collections. I think it's one of our better bargains, so this is a minimal added expense, so.
Okay. Did they get it, Melissa?
This was part of the 2020 budget work session that we had had previously, so looking at the overall budget, the increase is going to help try to bring expenditures or revenues in line with the actual expenditures.
Any discussion from council on the introduction ordinance 2019-20? We have a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance number 2019-20.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
My motion was made by Mr. Greenwood to introduce ordinance number 2019-20, an ordinance amending chapter 1060 of the Belbrook Municipal Code to increase rates charged for refuse collection, and this was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. We have no resolutions this evening, but we do have a city manager report.
So, the written report, I'm not going to go over absolutely everything because a lot of it is just explanation of some of the things that we've already done. We were presented with an Auditor of State award for the 2018 financial statements. That was dropped off by a member of the Ohio Auditor of State's office, so that just adds to the collection of the exact same award that's typically awarded to the city every year. There was a Brook Mills appreciation plaque, which is hanging out in the lobby here on the second floor. When we did our debrief of the race, Brandon Huff brought that over and really surprised the entire staff with that, so we made sure that we got that hung out in the lobby the same day, so it's really nice. So, if you haven't saw that, take a look at it. It's got metal and a bib that are all matted into the frame, so it's really nice for the first race year. Nice commemoration. Um, let's see. The website, this is the- this is the other big notable thing that I think that the community will be glad to see. The boards area, the website has been revamped and reorganized in a- in a small way as it relates to the boards, so our three boards that we have, we have the Planning Board, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals and Property Review Commission, which are together, and then we have the Village Review Board, and, well, there's also the Historical Board, and then Records Commission. So, there are some- some smaller boards as well, but the most active community boards in which we create documents for are the first three that I had listed, and what we had done is, on the boards page, it lists everybody as they serve on the boards and when their expiration- their term expirations are, and then there's also a page for each of those individual boards that has more information as it pertains to that board. And then we've also worked to get all of the agendas and minutes and things like that included into the website, into the same area where the council agendas and minutes and things like that are for all of the boards. So, we went back, I believe, to the beginning of 2019, Pam, is what we got. We can- we can put some more up there, but we wanted to make sure at least 2019 was up, but none of that stuff had ever typically been on our website, and so we noticed it and we thought it was important, so we're going to start updating all of that same information just as we do for council, so that it's out there for anybody that would like to review it. And we've done the work sessions for council and on the 2020 budget, and the next two council meetings, I will be bringing the 2020 budget ordinance, so that's it for me.
Does anybody on council have any questions for the city manager? Your report, Melissa? Community reports, service.
Nothing tonight.
Safety.
Uh, nothing tonight, mayor.
Finance and audit.
As our city manager just indicated, our budget work session's wrapped up tonight, and there'll be two meetings. One, introduce the ordinance at our next meeting, and then in December, our first meeting in December will- is the public meeting to approve it. So, I would encourage any residents who have any input or want to talk to council about the budget to attend the first meeting in December.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Community affairs.
The only thing I have is that the Community Thanksgiving Service will be Sunday, November 24th, 4:00 PM, at the Belbrook Community Church, and that's on West Franklin Street and Remco Drive, the corner there, right at Trecus Park.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Old business. Last thing, we talked about the request to remove the walking path and the approved plans for section three, phase one of Hy-Vee Terrace. Any update on that?
So, I had- that, as everybody recalls, that was a lengthy meeting and went over a lot of information, so I just want to be clear of the next steps. I had met with Rick Clemens about a number of different things, and this was touched on, too. It was- it was a good chance for me to get a lot of historical perspective on the development and just some different elements of it, so that I could understand them, and it's easier to ask the developer, obviously, some of the questions just directly versus looking at plans, kind of like the gate that's going to be erected that is supposed to be the emergency access gate that goes back to the landings. I asked him about that, asked him some of his recollections just on some various things, like the parkland that's supposed to be given to the city at some point. So, it was a really good conversation and a good opportunity to just be able to kind of ask some of those direct questions that I had known about but wasn't really clear about, and it's just easier to ask. So, we did talk about the walking path as well, and we talked about how on the plans it says that it's the responsibility of the homeowners association, and, you know, it's not clear in the plan as to where exactly the path would be within that 50-foot easement, and there were just- there was some information that was missing, and in the conversation, I told him that I thought that the best thing to do would be for the HOA, since they would be the responsible body, and the developer to look at those things as an entire group, especially since there are some people that are really advocates for the path and, you know, not changing it, and there are some- some other residents that would like to see the path, you know, changed and moved, and I think that since that is a neighborhood issue, it would make sense if the neighborhood and the HOA got together with the developer to kind of look at different options as it relates to that path and what would work best for the neighborhood, and he seemed very agreeable to that. We had talked about getting our engineer to go out and look at the variances in the plans from the original versions and the current grade and things like that, but that would be money that the city would have to pay an engineer to be able to review that kind of information. I'm not sure what kind of time that would take or what kind of cost that would be, so I just wanted to understand from council if- which option seems to be the best option, because if we get our engineer involved, obviously, there would be some costs associated with that, and we would have to budget those costs. If we give it back to the developer and the homeowners association to look at the plan to come up with a good solution for that community, I think that that would be the most collaborative approach, as it makes sense for that specific community and that developer, since it is his development and his plan. So, I just wanted to get clear direction from council as to which way to go, because I wasn't 100% sure how we were going to end it or leave it as in terms of next steps with that.
Discussion?
I think best-case scenario would be for the developer and the HOA to get together and resolve this. I think if the city gets in a position where we have to resolve it and enforce what was previously approved, then we're going to incur a bunch of costs to do it, which, you know, I guess we'll have to do, but I think there's probably a way that the two interested parties could- could get through this. I mean, the approval showed a path of some sort. It needs to be there in my mind. I just think they can work it out.
Okay.
I think that the developer should have some skin in the game, and so if the grading that we approved isn't the grading that's out there, then I think that he should be required to resolve it. At the same time, I don't want the city to spend money on something that doesn't make a lot of sense for the city to spend money on, so I guess I'm hopeful that the homeowners association and the developer can get together and work a reasonable resolution, but if that doesn't happen, it seems like the city is going to have to step in on behalf of the citizens to- to make sure that the developer is doing what he said he was going to do or is at least abiding by the plans that the city approved.
I totally agree with that approach. I think the collaborative work will be a better solution than something that was imposed.
Gerald?
My question is, what happened to the original easement that's along the river that we had- that was approved and that is existing there?
That's still there.
Is it still there?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it is.
This is within the development itself.
Wouldn't that be the least costly option for everyone? With a little bit of cleanup? Has anybody gone down there and looked at that?
I have.
I have, too.
Probably.
Then, my suggestion is that we look at that.
I agree with all of his comments. I'd like to go back to the homeowners association, the developer, and have them look at it, and maybe they'll decide that the best way to do it is use that property.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with that. I feel it's, you know, overstepping our bounds a little bit and coming and say, yes, the path has to stay or the path has to go, when in fact, we're not going to be involved in it all. We're not going to maintain it, and we're not going to do anything about it. It's going to be these folks here, the ciphers primarily, they're going to have to work with that as well as the homeowners association, so I'd like to let them come up with something they can agree upon and go forward with.
I've walked the old path along the creek and talked to the ciphers and looked the area over pretty good. I personally like the- along the creek, it's pretty, and it also ties in the park. And, but on the other hand, I think if you live in that community, I think they should try to work it out and- because they have to deal with it, they have to live with it, and once it's put in place, that's a long time. So, I'd like to see that worked out, but like I say, if I was going to walk it, I'd want to walk along that creek. That's really pretty. But since this started, there's been so much that's changed. The elevation's changed since it was brought to us on council. It's a lot steeper than it was. I mean, the whole land has changed, you know, it's being developed, and we talked about this before all that stuff was in place, so now the- I think it's- I think it's going to stay pretty much the same. I don't think you're going to- I hope. I don't know, but I think it would be good for the HOA and the developer to work on that, look at it. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments?
I agree. See what happens, and then see if the city needs to step in.
Okay. Do you give the direction to you, Melissa?
Okay.
Go forward, then. Any new business? This brings us to open discussion. We'll first start with council, then we'll go to the viewing audience.
I'd just like to congratulate our city employees and their service recognition. Says a lot about the city and a lot about our employees. And I thank them for all the work that they do. And I'd also like to congratulate our Lego team. Boy, Legos have come a long way since I was a kid. I was just happy to build a one-room house with a roof, but they've, you know, done a great job and I commend them for their efforts.
Thank you. First, I, I, I'm impressed with Lego group. They, they really, they're something. I'd just like to mention yesterday when it was warm, myself, Councilman McGill, Mrs. Cypher's and Pastor Saban, we, we put out a little bit of word about having a little veterans ceremony at the Bellbrook Veterans Memorial. And we had a little, little tiny ceremony and we discussed about maybe in the future, getting a, starting a little group to, um, kinda revitalize that and next year, maybe have a little better ceremony, better attendance, you know, better, just put something better together. And so we're interested and as the community starts working together, there's lots, some other projects that's been mentioned. And I think this would be a worthwhile one to, to work on. That's all I have. Okay, very good. Thanks. Elaine?
I just echo my admiration for the Lego team. It blows my mind what you, people can do with Legos. And, and the research reminds me a lot of, of another project that high schoolers do. And I, the name has escaped me. Good friend of mine.
That bots thing or the robots thing?
No, it's, it's Destination Imagination, where there's a lot of research and the kids do all the work. And I mean, they go to international competitions with it. So, um, talk about project-based learning. That is just phenomenal. So congratulations.
Thank you. Donna?
Just wanted to say congratulations to all the service award winners. A lot of longevity. I mean, I know Bob Lottner Milk for 35 years. That's a long time to, to provide the city's services. And so grateful that we still have him, that he's still around and volunteers for stuff as well. So, um, good luck to the, to the Lego team. Sounds like an interesting competition. I hope that you guys do well and hopefully you'll let us know how you did at the University of Dayton.
Yep, thank you.
What's it tonight, sir?
Daryl?
Creativity and imagination. It's the foundation of the community with the youngsters. You know, if we don't have that, then we, the community falls apart. So I commend you for what you've done. It's great. Research was good. Very good oral presentations, too. We weren't afraid in front of that podium. So, thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. And I wanna echo those comments too. I, I met with the Lego team and I was really impressed with them. And I look forward to seeing what they do with the competition. Maybe they'll have a video they can share with us or something our next meeting, see how it goes. And the other thing is, one of the best parts about this job is the employee service recognition. And Bellbrook has been blessed to have a lot of long-term employees. And it's always nice to recognize their longevity. And I think that's a real testament to how great a place it is to, to live and work in Bellbrook.
Yep.
Now we'll open up the open discussion to the audience. We need your name and address and you're entitled to three minutes.
I'm not gonna get all philosophical this time, so don't worry. So in a, I guess sort of a weird turn of events, you know, I listened to the discussion tonight. And so we hired an attorney for this and he, he's done a bunch of legal analysis for us. And believe it or not, basically what he has said is that this is between the developer and the HOA. That the problem, the problem that exists is that the, the, and I'll read his words. "It appears clear to me that the walking path easement was never dedicated to the city of Bellbrook for public use. Consequently, the city of Bellbrook should be asked to remove the proposed multi-use path drawn in the Highview Terrace development as that map appears in the Bellbrook Comprehensive Plan and properly announce this change to clear up the misconception that the original plan provided to the public." So I guess in short, what you guys have decided to do tonight, in a weird turn of events, to, to put this between HOA, which technically doesn't exist yet, and Clemens Development, is basically what the, you know, our attorney that we hired has said, that the city doesn't basically have a say in this at all. It shouldn't have been put on the comprehensive plan to begin with because it was never deeded to the city. So it's not the city's path. So anyway, just, I'm just gonna, because it came up tonight, you know, as general discussion, but we did obviously not, you know, to be mean or anything, we hired an attorney because we needed some legal counsel on this, you know? But through that legal counsel, he has said that this path, we researched it, we researched the deeds and everything, and that this path was never provided to the city in the first place. So the city has no ownership of the path to begin with. So, um, you know, if, if needed, we can, you know, have him draft up, you know, a professional document and send it to the city. But tonight, what we're asking is that it be removed from the comprehensive plan as a multi-use path because it's not public use. It's for the HOA, which basically has taken us in a big circle.
Right.
And we're back to where we started in the first place. So anyway, that's.
Well, as the city manager, maybe reach out to your attorney and get the eyes dotted and the t's crossed and go from there.
I just ask, we keep the conversation very, very short because he definitely charges about this, about an hour. And I think every phone call's a, you know, an hour. So.
Understand.
Yeah. Absolutely. Because that's, you know, Dan Brown's his name. He'll provide you all of his information if you need it.
He was a former public resident. He's seen us public well.
He does know it well. And in a weird turn of events, somehow we ended up with him as our attorney. So, but I, I just wanted to get up and state that, considering basically what everybody said tonight.
Okay.
Sort of makes sense. We've kinda gone in a circle. So, thank you. I appreciate everybody's time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that was good times.
Next.
Catherine Cypher's name. So how do we update the comprehensive plan to remove that as quickly as possible?
I need to take a look at that.
Okay, 'cause there is no legal basis for the city to be able to claim that it's public. And if you do not remove it, then you're technically violating the Fourth Amendment rights. It's eminent domain territory. You cannot take personal property for government use without just compensation. So that's why our attorney has suggested to remove it as quickly as possible. So I'm asking you, what's the process to get it off of the plan? Is it just a memo from him? Or do we have to go back through the planning board? Because we asked how to do this in the beginning. We went to the city with emails. We went to Jeff. We went to you. We said, how are we supposed to do this? We have a problem. People are coming in our backyard. They're coming on our porch. We followed the process exactly how the city told us. And now we're right back to where we are at the beginning. You're saying that you need something from a lawyer, but, which is fine. It's not a public path. We said that in the beginning and we were told that it was. So we need to know specifically what we need to do.
A change to the comprehensive plan would require an ordinance from city council and it might have to go to planning board first. But with the situation and what, everything that's transpired as it relates to this, I need to just take a look at that. But council passes the comprehensive plan with an ordinance. So it would be a change to ordinance if they had to change the comprehensive plan.
So how do we get it to be introduced, I guess is the question as well? Because we've already paid an initiation fee to be seen in front of the planning board. And now we're just told we didn't need to. So we've kinda wasted a lot of money and gone full circle for somebody's personal payment.
We'll have to go with the Green County people. Find what we need to do, change it, take it out.
And Stephen Keel.
Yeah, we'll get our attorney involved as well.
Okay. So do we have to introduce something?
Are we gonna change it though and then change it back once we knew, know where the path is? Because I mean, if we, we still don't have the deeded.
Well, it's not public property, so it just comes off anyway.
But we don't have the parkland and everything from the developer. So.
But the, the parkland was, is the path along the creek.
I know, but do we even, do we even know what the parkland is that the developer gave us?
Yes. We do, we do. It's, it's listed. It was supposed to be, that was something that I spent quite a bit of time talking to Clemens about was that parkland situation because it was, it, that needs to all be resolved too. So I'm not sure how this is referenced in the comprehensive plan. I know that walkability is, but this path in particular in the comprehensive plan, I'm not sure.
It goes right up our property line.
I'm not sure how it's referenced. I'd have to take a look at it.
There's a purple line right up.
We'll follow up on it. I understand.
All right. Cause we'd like to be able to do whatever we have to do to get that off right away.
Right.
We don't want the people that's coming in our backyard or on our porch or leaving beer cans in the yard again.
We understand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Foccolo, 126 Lower Hillside Drive, Bellbrook, Ohio. I'm gonna talk about a couple of topics. I'll try to keep it brief. I wanna talk about the Old Village. The grand deal with the people in the Old Village was that they would accept zoning overlay restrictions in exchange for local control. That, that means you had an Old Village Review Board. There was a quota system. It was weighted heavily in favor of Old Village residents being on that board, in addition to a business representative, in addition to an architect. The Property Review Commission, which was not in existence at that time, apparently is a reality here. I would recommend that those powers be stripped from the Property Review Commission for the Old Village and be returned to the Old Village Review Board. The promise to the residents was that outsiders, being people who lived outside the Old Village district, would not tell them how to maintain their properties, the colors it should be, maintenance issues. These buildings, some of these buildings are pre-Civil War buildings. People don't realize it. But that's, you're talking, in one case, 1825, and it was not the first building. These buildings have a disproportional, your, your ordinances and your zoning enforcement has a disproportional impact upon people in the Old Village. Most the businesses in the Old Village are small businesses. Some are mom and pop. Most of the residents in the Old Village are retirees, many living on social security, fixed incomes and pensions. So they need some control. The Old Village Review Board needs to be an important part of the city in all phases. You know, if there's been enroachment upon their powers, that needs to be dialed back a little bit. And you can do that through I think the way the zoning has gone in the Old Village over the past few months has been somewhat of a train wreck. And it's not been fully explored here. I don't wanna fully explore it tonight. But the, the easement was, it shouldn't have ever been an issue, frankly. And I think it's been a train wreck. I wanna read something. It said, it's hard to read. It said, okay, months ago, the blank and the blank, referring to city employees, which I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna name there, were calling some more than one business owners deadbeats. The response was yes. These are all people you know, by the way. People who are credible. Response was yes. The blank said that to me too. I heard that from two different city employees referring to Mr. Dart as a deadbeat. I brought it up during one meeting at the, up at Cali Associates. And I believe that Mr. Dart has been the victim of an influence campaign, for lack of a better term, chinning up public opinion against him and his property. Zoning, what I always liked about zoning is that it should be, at its best, fact-based. It shouldn't be political. It shouldn't be swaying to public opinion.
We're kind of running short on time, but go ahead.
Okay. I do, the other has to do with the Old Village. Okay? The, the, on this Dart thing, I've heard a lot of anecdotal stories from people. And again, they're all credible people. In the Old Village, Bellbrook passed, well, Bellbrook passed a citywide ordinance saying that the city of Bellbrook did not have to complain with zoning, planning board approvals, put up signs. That was so the police department put signs out, the road department put up the speed limit sign, whatever. No one anticipated 40 or 50 years ago that that would create a loophole today. And what that loophole is, in the Old Village is where it's having its biggest impact, that the city is able to put up signs that private property owners would not be able to put up without getting any regulatory approval. These are not safety signs. These are promotional signs. And I would like to see that ordinance amended to where that now goes before the Old Village Review Board, just entreated on an equal basis as anyone else. A good example is when you leave tonight, you'll notice the Township Firehouse to the right. Township Firehouse has a sign that sits back. The Township is actually complying with our sign ordinance or the ordinance that was in place at that time. The city also needs to do that. It's a matter of consistency. And I do believe it's a, it's a bone of contention with the Old Village Review Board.
How much are we doing this time?
Okay.
We gotta wrap up, Dave. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Two more points. I'll try to keep it into a sentence. I'd like to know, at Dart Construction, there was a police report and police officers arrived about some work he was doing on the building. What I'd like to, and I've got no complaint against the police department or the officers in any way. What I'd like to know is how that report was made to the police, who made that report to the police, how it came in and if there's a record of it. Did it come out on a 911 call? Was it made on a cell phone to, to a police officer or to the chief? I'd like to know the source of that complaint.
Okay.
The other thing is.
We're kind of out of time, but.
This is the grand finale.
Please.
I think the council needs to do for its own good, for the good of the community, a detailed re, job performance review of the city manager. I'll just leave it at that. And if you, you know, I've, I've talked to some of you about it. I'll talk to any of you about it. But I don't want you to go to the class tonight. I'm willing to, but I don't think that's the way to process it.
Very good. Thank you.
I hope you do that. Thank you.
Name's Greg Dart. Tried to make it last time, but Sherry and I, the door was locked, so we didn't, we didn't get to come to the last meeting. We were here about.
Oh, sorry.
30 after, but we're here, I'm here this time. I've had a few people talk on my behalf, but I decided to come tonight. I wanna keep this as positive as I can. Cause I try to live in a very positive world with all I do. But it's, it's a very difficult conversation. But I wanna keep it positive and try to move forward positively. I do not have my attorney here tonight, which is a, is a bit difficult. I spoke to him before I came, but I have been informed by administration during this process of the Dart-Pennawatt building situation that I had to have an attorney to talk to zoning inspectors or review, which is difficult. I decided to come here tonight without him. Didn't know I was gonna talk till about 6:30. But back, back to trying to be positive. Right now, I'm not sure whether I should continue decorating for Christmas, helping the revitalization committees that are doing things, and the Lions Club and Optimists and all the different groups that I've always supported, or whether I should stop doing that and focus all the time it's taken to deal with the Facebooks and the negativity and all the talks from people about something that shouldn't be. Of course, that's my opinion about something that shouldn't be. But as Davis said a few times, there needs to be equality. And I feel that I've been discriminated against, against some of these things. It's okay. I, I'm willing to work with anybody to make something work, but this has been, it's been a bit over the top and it takes away from productivity. I've heard from many people that I did not communicate with city officials, which is definitely untrue. I, in fact, reached out to the new city manager. constantly in Belbrook. I explained the historical significance of the building. I also spoke to zoning manager when he called me about wanting to look at some things on the building, and potential, you know, talking about some things that could be zoning violations. He called me, I believe, a few days after the tornado had hit, and the tornado destroyed, I don't know, a thousand of our customers' homes or businesses, anywhere from Brookville, Troutwood, a lot of Green County, and Beaver Creek, and I explained to him that I hadn't slept in days, and probably wouldn't for weeks, and that before the tornado hit, we were moving our things out of the building, because we'd outgrown it, and we'd always had another plan for the building. Thankfully, we, you know, are outgrowing it, but, so, it's, it's very expensive to do that, and I explained that right now, I don't have the manpower to get people back in their homes or businesses, working twenty-plus hours a day in three shifts, let alone come down and address twenty-nine violations, well, I'm sorry, I back up. Address things that could be violations on the building, but that I had a historical, longtime Belbrook architect that's been here his whole life, and had a office on the main street of Belbrook, who was helping me draw plans. I explained that I had been working with the national parks in the state of Ohio to keep the building a historically accurate landmark of Belbrook. A lot of people don't understand that, about what it takes to restore an eighteen twenties building and keep it a landmark, instead of gutting it and making it look like a strip center building, which is of extreme importance to me, which is why I purchased the building to begin with. Again, I want to stay positive with this, but I'm here tonight to explain a few things. I think that hav, having to have a lawyer to speak with my community administration, or anyone that is a hired person in the city of Belbrook, is a very big burden, it's burdensome on me. This has been a huge expense. It's taken away from money that I could spend on the building, and the other buildings that myself and my group owns in Belbrook that we fix up all the time. I don't run around and tell people and ask for affirmation of what we do in Belbrook, but, I, and I don't want it, but there's a lot of things that people don't know that we do in Belbrook. I don't want to be in the paper, I'd never do want an award, I continue doing things positively, and that's just wasted time to run around, ask people, and tell them what we do. But we fix up a lot of properties. Last year alone, we got four vacant spaces that were either inhabitable, or to the point of almost condemned status. Two of them revitalized, and we got three new businesses in the downtown part of Belbrook. I've never come to the council, maybe I should have been told him that, but...
Greg, we're fast, we're running out of time, but go ahead.
I know, I'll, I'll wrap, yeah, thank you, I'll wrap up. I, I want to continue helping Belbrook all I can. Again, there, there's a meeting on the nineteenth, but I'm respectfully asking the council to cancel that meeting. I've made, I have done many things that zoning asked me to do, as best we can, without spending at least a hundred thousand, or in excess, on the building, which is not in the budget, it can't be done right now. We could go on and on, I'm sure this could be another meeting, which I'd be glad to come back for as many meetings as I need to, share anything I can. But at, right at the moment, with the expense it takes to hire an attorney, do this work, that some of it is unnecessary and will be removed, destroyed, and redone properly in the near future, I'd ask that the meeting be canceled. If it can't, I have to reevaluate my business and personal look at this situation and decide that if I'm going to have a legal battle with this, I don't want to do that. I want to go into a positive manner, but I feel at the moment, the deck is stacked. And if I'm going to go up against a stacked deck, I've got to prepare for it, but I would much rather go put the old sleds in the windows and decorate with the Optimus Club, and do the Belbrook Mountain thing that's going on, and help them, and continue, but I, it's very hard to do both, and keep people back in their homes and businesses from the tornado, so...
Okay.
That's, that's my request, and again, I'll come back any time, but I don't have a whole lot of time right now, other than trying to make money to better Belbrook and, and continue, so, I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, we'll talk with the city staff to see if we can adjust that meeting, meeting date.
Thank you.
All right. We'll vote on that, or... Next. Going twice? No one else? Okay. Does any member of council have any other business that you'd come before us tonight?
None, ma'am.
Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned.